The regular session of the city council of the city of Pleasant, Texas will now come to order. The time is 6:59 PM. Item two is the invocation and it will be followed by the pledge. And by his presence, I assume it's Junior Jones, Brother Jones, is going to give our invocation, followed by the pledge.
Sure, we have a moment of prayer. Gracious Lord, we thank thee for the beauty of another day. We thank thee for everything that's come together on this evening and to put our minds together to discuss the business of our county and of our city. We pray for our mayor, for city council, and for police department, judges, and for all that make up this cabinet. We pray that we have minds, we work together, because you have told us in your word that all things work together for good for those that love thee and call according to their purpose. We pray, master, when we leave here, we find we serve as you have told us to serve, because we have the assurance that united we stand and divided we fall. Bless our homes, bless the children, and our school, bless the police department in harm's way. We pray that you will continue to do that in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
We'll face the flag, hand over heart. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Item number three is the roll call. Thank you. Ms. Israel.
Here.
Mr. Seitz.
Here.
Mr. Best.
President.
Ms. Pacifica.
Here.
Mr. Gagels.
Here.
Item number four is the consent agenda. Item number is approval of the minutes of the workshop of April 16th, 2015. Item number B, approval of the minutes of the regular session of April 16th, 2015. Item C is approval of the final plat for Cinco Hevis subdivision, and your recommendation is to approve?
Yes.
Mayor.
Mr. Gagels.
I move to approve the consent agenda, A, B, and C.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items A, B, and C. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. Those in favor, the motion, please raise your right hand, post the same sign. Consent agenda is adopted. Item number five is ordinances and resolutions. Item A is the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 15-1142 amending the 2025 master plan for the city of Pleasanton.
Mayor.
Item number, excuse me?
No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Please let the record show Mr. Garza is with us. Ordinance number 15-1142 is an ordinance of the city of Pleasant, Texas, amending the 2025 master plan for the city of Pleasanton, providing this ordinance be cumulative, providing for severability, governmental immunity, injunctions, and publication, and become effective upon second publication.
Mayor.
Mr. Gagels.
I move to approve the adoption of ordinance number 15-1142 amending the 2025 master plan for the city of Pleasanton.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 15-1142 amending the 2025 master plan for the city of Pleasanton.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 15-1142 amending the 2025 master plan for the city of Pleasanton. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. Those in favor, the motion, please raise your right hand, post the same sign. Ordinance is adopted. Item number B is reading and adoption of ordinance number 15-1143 amending ordinance number 12-1065 for levying taxes for the use and support of municipal government and providing for the interest in sinking fund and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 15-1143 is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Pleasant, Texas, amending ordinance number 12-1065 for levying taxes for the use and support of municipal government and providing for the interest in sinking fund for the year 2012, 2013, and apportioning each levy for its specific purpose, providing for the collection of deposits of taxes, establishing a discount for early payment, establishing a homestead exemption, and those 65 years of age and older and declaring emergency.
Mayor.
Mr. Gagels.
I move to approve ordinance number 15-1143 amending ordinance 12-1065 for levying taxes for the use and the support of the municipal government and providing for interest in sinking fund and declaring an emergency.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 15-1143 amending ordinance number 12-1065 for levying taxes for the use and support of the municipal government and providing for interest in sinking funds and declaring an emergency. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. Those in favor, the motion, please raise your right hand, post the same sign. Ordinance is adopted. Item number C is reading and adoption of ordinance number 15-1144 amending ordinance number 14-1119 for levying taxes for the use and support of municipal government and providing an interest in sinking fund and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 15-1144 is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Pleasant, Texas, amending ordinance number 14-1119 for municipal government and providing, I'm sorry, levying taxes for the use and support of municipal government and providing for the interest in sinking fund for the year 2014, 2015, and supporting each levy for its specific purpose, providing for the collection and deposit of taxes, establishing a discount for early payment, and establishing a homestead exemption for those 65 years of age and older and declaring emergency.
Mayor.
I move to approve ordinance number 15-1144 amending ordinance 14-1119 for levying taxes
for the use and the support of the municipal government and providing for the interest and sinking funds and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 15-1144 amending ordinance number 14-1119 for levying taxes for the use and support of municipal government and providing for the interest in sinking fund and declaring an emergency. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. Those in favor, the motion, please raise your right hand, post the same sign. Ordinance is adopted. Item number six is citizens' comments. If you're a citizen of or taxpayer to the city, you can speak at this time. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Know that council and staff may not comment. All right. Item number seven, departmental reports.
Public Works Director's report will be followed by Mr. Rainey's report from Community Development Services, and we'll move to that point with the manager's and mayor's message.
Good evening, council mayor. Evening. Action for the month of April was 41,434,000 gallons with a daily average of 1.4 million gallons. Our utility department crews repaired several sewer services that had shifted and settled throughout the town and resumed, and then they resumed the services on one ship road. We're busy repairing pump controls damaged by recent thunderstorms, and they also repaired both booster pumps at the Woodland Waterway. This week, we had our annual water tank inspection. The contractor televised and inspected inside all the ground storage water tanks and elevated water tanks. From their findings, they recommended a light blast and a new paint on all the ground storage tanks. This is a budget item in our next proposed budget. Tomorrow, we will be replacing a damaged fire hydrant at Sandra Circle on Oak, this will involve a disruption of service for this area for about two hours. Our main, our water main project, the board contractor completed the waterline board on Highway 97 and Corgi Road. Their subcontractor completed a directional waterline board which went underneath the Addis Quesa River from the Pecan Orchard over to Mabel from Road. They will now begin to lay approximately 250 feet of 12-inch pipe and tie into the completed board at the railroad crossing near First Street and Uvalde. We have also made contact with HD Supply and have scheduled delivery of the materials in categories so that we can better accept and inventory the materials as they are delivered. Since this is a large order, this will assist us in our checks and balance process. Delivery of these materials start next week, as early as next week. Landmark, the water tower contractor has had no activity since the completion of the water tank column. I spoke with the general contractor, and he advised that he would finish, that they finished up ahead of schedule, and the next crew is scheduled to arrive on May 21st. The Addis Quesa River Cleaning Project, John Manning met with the contractor this week and completed a final walk through of the project. He advised the contractor has completed the project as per plans. The Parks Department crews continued to maintain the grounds for City Hall, Civic Center, and Police Department. They mowed the grounds at Williamsburg Park, the Longhorn Museum, and the EMS building. They have also started spraying for mosquitoes and also treating the standing waters in areas throughout town. Free Department crews continue to mow the drainage and all entryways. Due to lightning and high winds from recent thunderstorms, several light bulbs and wind saw, and light bulbs for the windsocks were replaced along and along the runway. The grounds were mowed and herbicide was sprayed on all vegetation along the taxiway and around the terminal and hangars. We also met with Tech Dot Aviation and addressed previous inspection issues and discussed some ways on handling pending items such as crack sealing the runway. And the field tank is scheduled to be water blasted and painted next week.
Any questions for Mr. Weezer?
Mayor.
Israel.
Mr. Weezer, I'm wondering if the only thing that's holding us up on Kilgore.
Yes.
Is weather.
The weather. Yeah, as soon as we got some dry weather, it rained like a couple days after that. So we had a couple of weeks that just weren't cooperating with us, and then.
So we are ready with materials and everything?
Materials, yes.
And everyone that we need?
As soon as we can get some good, a good week, we'll get back on it.
Okey dokey. Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Pacifica.
Mr. Mayor. Is there anything that, and maybe I shouldn't ask this now, but is there anything being done about the vines that are growing on the oak trees on Oak Valley?
On Oak Valley?
By the drainage area?
Right there off of, by the drainage on the complex, by the complex?
Yeah, by the complex, yes. There's all those vines.
No, but we can address that, yes, as far as what's going on the fence line and along the drainage.
Right, right.
Cheeto has found a way to do that. We just cut it off at the bottom, and they'll die off, and we can pick them off.
Okay, because I noticed it's starting to grow across the wires, and it's.
We can address that.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you.
Any?
Good evening, mayor, council.
Good evening.
My report's going to be brief. Numbers, first I'd like to say that May is actually Building Safety Week. We would like to do some things next year, hopefully to promote building safety. As my department sometimes is a thankless job, but we're advocates for the community to make sure buildings are being built safe, citizens are getting what they're paying for, they're getting a safe product by contractors, whether locally or contractors coming from surrounding areas. With that being said, as of October 1st with the new fiscal year, we had 606 permits secured miscellaneous, all the way from plants, buildings, electrical, plumbing, storages, all compiled, total of 606 total permits, which is a pretty decent amount for being halfway through the year. We have had six major projects permitted and secured within the last month. One, two, three, four, six CFOs mainly in that new area where the Route 21, AT&amp;T, and the Wingstop. The Bell's Department Store went a major renovation, had a lot of square footage. If y'all haven't been in there, I recommend y'all go in there. There's a lot more options now. You don't have to worry about the same person wearing the same shirt. Residential dwellings, housing plans have been steady, and we haven't seen an increase in housing permits, new residential housing permits. Projects under construction, we have 16 current projects from coming out of the ground to roughing in the walls to finishing up. So we're very active. With that being said, I think me and David are averaging 105 permits, excuse me, 105 inspections per month between the both of us, with handling our other duties. On the co-compliance side, Jesse Flores has been pretty active with chasing all this grass that is growing with all this nice rain that we're receiving. Is it a bad thing or a good thing? I'd rather be chasing live grass than dead grass. Also, on the compliance side, Jesse has had since September of last year, Jesse has had a total of seven people comply with dilapidated houses on their own, tearing them down, getting these houses removed. So this is people recognizing that, yes, this house got in the way from them, they're recognizing that, hey, let me help the city and clean the city up. Also, the other project we're working on, we've been working on a CASA project behind the old library. That project has been, to me, rewarding. I started with a project, been stressed out, little bit extra load on my hands, but the overall, I'm doing it with a smile. I do want to thank David Haley over there. He's shy in the corner. Without him, I wouldn't be able to do the project, Sajid Lee. He has picked up the ball and helped me get to this project where it's at today. I can't thank him enough. David, I want to let you know that. I can't thank you enough. Public Works has helped. The community has helped on this project. It's been so neat to see people come together on this project and a little bit of elbow grease. It took in time away from my family, but the overall, I think my family's proud of me, so I'm proud of the project. It's a slow pace, but it's doing good. City manager has talked with Joni Garcia as of today, and so we can get her in there, they can start getting contractor bids for the flooring. That's kind of all we've done in the nutshell in the last month or so. I stand for any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Rainey?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I know there was some questions about handicap access for the building, for the people from CASA. How is that being managed?
Existing building code, what the code states in the state is that the building has to actively start pursuing to go in compliance, but there's a gray area. It doesn't give you a time limit, it just says that actively, so you can start as the width of the door, 32 inches, you got the width of the door. I know on the restroom, we put a handicap toilet with an open seat and handrails. We're very limited when it comes to existing building, but the code recognizes that there's buildings that are not going to be 100% in compliance. You got to work with what you got to do without creating a, work with what you have without creating a hardship. That's kind of where we're at. Right now, somebody on a wheelchair can get in a doorway through the driveway, you have to put a handicap, maybe a decouch on it, here's the parking, you got to give an accessible route. I think we do meet that, as I explained to Joni one time. You just got to work towards it, you know, maybe on the next budget year, hey, this year, I'm going to maybe put a sidewalk into the front because we want to go this route. But as of right now, we have put some measures, some things in place to accommodate.
So that'll keep them, that won't stop them from being able to open?
Oh, no. By all means, no. It's, like I said, there's some latitude there.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
Other questions?
Mayor.
Israel.
I wanted to know, are we at a point where we're able to look at the end and them actually being able to get in there? Is that where we're at?
Yes, the air conditioning's up and running, so we have air conditioning up and running. The plumbing's complete. Me and David completed the plumbing last week. We were actually shoveling and tying in some pipes. The plumbing's complete, the windows installed. We do have to do some caulking, some minor issues before the painter, the contractor that's going to donate the painting, so we'll get the painting, maybe some, the tape and float, some painting, that'll be done. So we're at the tail end of it.
So do we have an actual date that will be turned over to CASA to finish it?
My hands are tied when you're asking for donations. I can tell you on my part.
Yes.
We're probably 99% when I solicit donations, like this contractor's aware. So when I tell him, it's going to be to his discretion, so to speak, because we're taking this as a donation at no cost. So I can't, I can't give you that day, but I know that they are working with me, and I'm hoping, keeping my fingers crossed, it's within the next few weeks.
So is this with the flooring that you're waiting for now, or this is for the painting?
The painting, the tape and flow.
You're waiting for, so some contractors have been interested.
Yes.
And donating, and so what we're waiting on now is the possibility that they are in fact going to do that.
And follow through.
And follow through.
Yes, and follow through, yes, ma'am, correct.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much, and thank you for all your hard work. I know it's almost been 18 months, I think, since the last time we looked at it, maybe not that long, maybe a year.
[laughing]
Exact, though. I know there's been a lot of issues. I understand that, and I really appreciate the perseverance to get this done and get it done so CASA doesn't have to have a major financial input.
Well, I welcome y'all to stop by and take a look. It's just totally changed. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Rainey. Item number eight is the city manager's message. Andres.
Evening, mayor and council. I wanted to give you a couple of updates this evening. The Cronos project, we began a simulated live performance for the first pay period this morning. We'll repeat that on the 21st. We had a manager's training with the consultant on a go-to meeting earlier this week. I think most of the managers who will have oversight of reviewing the time sheets felt like it was so user-friendly and so easy to use. We're still going to have a train the trainers. We will hope to have two of our folks who deal with human resources to go to Public Works and the Police Department in two Wednesdays to help the chief and help Mr. Weezer go through the time sheets electronically on a simulated basis. So we're moving towards that point of being live without paper, first paycheck in June. Tom Zoom's president and CEO, about a week or so ago, cable around town pretty quickly. They were in looking at City Hall's connections. We've asked for a quote to go broadband with our internet services at City Hall and the other buildings in the city. They also, as we facilitated several meetings with developers, they have met with the developers that are developing out on Airport Road, several developers on Highway 97. I think we may have some promising results with developers putting the infrastructure in on their private property to connect to broadband cable. Additionally, our street reconstruction program, three of the first four roads that will be reconstructed, we opened bids on Tuesday afternoon at 2 o'clock. Mr. Metting and Mr. Kope are adding the bid tabs. We feel comfortable, we'll have a recommendation to award the contract at the 26th meeting. You have several Police Department discussion action items in front of you this evening. I would ask that you listen to the chief. He and I have been working on this for about two and a half to three. We have a very unusual opportunity where vehicles are concerned, that we just do not feel like that the city can afford to pass up. It's similar to last July when we came to you all about the remake of the Tahoe between the 2014, 2015. As luck would have it, we have found a dealer in North Texas that ordered 150 2014s, and then the agency didn't pick the order up after they hit the ground. And he's been trying to sell these 2014s for the last year, year and a half. We have a very unusual opportunity to get some fleet replacement done this evening. I think the overall savings is about $53,000, which is what it costs to buy two of them. Our budget schedule will be produced to the new council when they're sworn in, May 26. We will follow much of the same regimen, the same timing as we did last year. We will ask the new council to cancel the first meeting in July, much like we've done over the last three years, to give staff and council some time off. We've had some early numbers in from the appraisal district. It wouldn't be prudent to discuss them because they're very preliminary, but we think we're at least static with property values at this time. We'll see how contests and lawsuits come through, but we're moving towards that. I can tell you that we're working feverishly to get that draft budget ready for you all. I have to commend Raquel, and I have to commend Christie for working with me on that. They're doing a remarkable job. I'll stand for any questions or comments.
Questions for Mr. Prishen. Thank you, Mr. Prishen.
Thank you.
Item number nine is mayor's message and announcements. I have two. We have a special session on the 11th of May at 2:00 PM, Andres? 2:00 PM, so that's Monday at 2:00 PM. And our meeting on the regular session on the 21st has been moved, just a reminder, to the 26th. That's all I have. Item 10 is proclamation for Friday, May 15th to be lupus awareness day in Pleasanton. My understanding is the group is not here to accept it, but I will stand to read it. Proclamation by the mayor of the city of Pleasanton, Texas, whereas lupus is one of the cruelest and most mysterious diseases on earth, and whereas lupus is an unpredictable and misunderstood autoimmune disease that ravages parts of the body, and whereas lupus is difficult to diagnose, hard to live with, and a challenge to treat, and whereas the Lupus Foundation of America Lone Star Chapter is a national force devoted to solving the cruel mystery of lupus while providing caring support for those who suffer from its brutal impact. Now therefore, I, Clinton J. Powell, mayor of the city of Pleasant, Texas, do hereby proclaim May 15th, 2015, is a day of lupus awareness, put on Purple Day, and encourage all to participate by wearing something purple, example, wristbands, shirts, ties, et cetera, to raise awareness of lupus and rally public support to help public know lupus so we can have a world with no lupus. In witness thereof, I heretofore set my hand and seal this 7th day of May 2015. Mr. Best just reminded me, election day, last day of the, for election, our election day is Saturday, so there's another reminder for you. All right, item number 11 is special recognitions of telecommunications officers for National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Chief Sanchez.
Good evening, mayor, council.
Good evening.
This year, National Public Safety Telecommunications Week was held on April 12th through the 18th. We had some scheduling issues, so we weren't unable to recognize our telecommunications officers on that week. We were able to move it to today. We, I cannot say how much I appreciate the work that our dispatchers do. They're, well, people are at home at night asleep, there's a dispatcher at the PD awake, dispatching officers. They're the lifeline to our police officers. They have a very crucial, stressful job. It could be boring one minute and heart-stopping excitement the next. And they play a vital role in the Pleasanton Police Department, and we appreciate them very much. And with your permission, mayor, I'd like to call their names and have them step up here, and if we could have a picture taken with.
Please.
With you and the councils there. First, I'd like to recognize Amika Chapa. And Marissa Valdez. We have Andrew Pullin, but he's out sick today. I'd like to thank what these ladies do. I'm very grateful for what they do. I cannot stress how important their job is, and the police department cannot function with these ladies. We also have our official photographer here, Abe Jobhorn. If we could get a picture, we would really appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, ladies. Also, Mr. Mayor, heartfelt thank you from the communications staff for, to you and the council for approving the new Cardinal Bad software and our computer aided dispatch. They're very grateful. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number 12 is introduction of new AEP and community affairs. Representative, I'm going to guess, should have been there.
Mayor, I've been meeting with our new community relations manager for Mayor, I've been meeting with our new community relations manager for months now. Asked her several months ago when we were, or a month or so ago when we were beginning to discuss the Old Town Street lamps down Main Street when it's reconstructed, trying to decide which way we wanted to go, whether we wanted to meter those lamps or whether we wanted to pay the regular streetlight fee each month. Asked her if she would come to council and say a few words and introduce herself. Your tablets were provided by her this evening. I found her to be a can-do person. And the reason it's difficult to ask her to come is she lives in Uvalde. However, it's easy, which we asked her to come to Pleasanton because she gets to visit with her father. And so, without any further ado, I'd like to introduce Rita Paris.
I replace Tony RC, and I'm looking forward to working with everyone here. If you have any issues, call me. Inside this little book is my card, so feel free to call me anytime. I don't have the answers to everything, but I can pull in the party so we can resolve whatever issue. So, look forward to working with everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Item number 13, discussion action to appoint a hotel motel tax grant committee for two-year term.
You all seated the very first hotel motel tax committee, grant committee, two years ago in March. You asked us to bring it back for reappointment or new appointment, if you will, before the review period started after the first initial two years. To recap, we had looked for folks that were not associated with any of the groups that possibly apply for grants, someone who had, folks who have knowledge of the tourism industry, someone who has a good understanding of financing, accounting, and those folks willing to be served. This evening, we're asking for the reappointment of the spokesman for the committee for the last two years, Mr. Rusty Garvin. He could not be here tonight because of a prior commitment with a civic organization that he is the president of. He's the president of Prosperity Bank. He's been involved in hotel motel grants in other communities, and he brings a very unique perspective to the committee. We asked for the reappointment as well of Tiffany Bidwell. She's the owners of Kadobe's Restaurant in Pleasanton. She's been a longtime resident of this area and this region. She really understands what brings people from out of town to, quote, put heads in beds. We also asked for the reappointment of our museum director, Valerie Purgson. She is the first and foremost person who sees tourism as it enters our city and they stop at the museum. She has done an excellent job over the last two years. The new appointments we're asking for this evening would be Carolina Martinez, our library, our director of the library. Although she has not been in Pleasanton that long, Carolina brings in a vast amount of experience from the cities of Austin and Arlington, which are huge tourism cities. She understands the keys to attracting people to the city. She's all about sharing our community with not only our citizens, but others as well. And we also asked for the appointment this evening of Earl Peterson. Mr. Peterson's been with the city of Pleasanton since 2007. He's served in several capacities to include code enforcement, supervisor of community developed services, and now is the director of facilities and activities. His exposure to outside groups, and as much as anything, his 30 years in the hospitality business make him a perfect fit for this committee. I have asked those folks if they'd begin reviewing some of the documentation that's required. They have willingly began to review that documentation. Your options are in front of you this evening. I might remind you that you asked us to bring this back to you before the initial review process began after the initial two-year period. Our recommendation is to appoint the five individuals, three of whom would be reappointed, and two new ones, to the hotel motel tax grant committee to consider grant applications for fiscal years 16 and 17.
Mayor?
Mr. Gagos.
I move to approve the appointment of the five individuals nominated to the hotel motel grant committee to consider grant applications for the fiscal year 2016, 2017.
Second.
Moved and seconded to appoint the five individuals nominated to the hotel motel grant committee to consider grant applications for the fiscal year 2016, 2017. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Ms. Israel.
Mr. Pearson, I'm wondering, would Mr. Garvin immediately hold, continue to hold the chair?
That would be selected by the committee itself.
So, they would have a chance to consider other possibilities?
Yes, ma'am. And they have asked me, several of the existing committee members have called me and asked me to come to a, kind of a orientation meeting, if you will, before they start reviewing and considering new grants. I went two years ago to the first meeting, which was an orientation meeting. I gave them the letter of requirement that was approved by the council, the application, the post-event report form, and I said, if you need any help, call me, but I'm not a part of this committee. They appointed you because of your knowledge and your skill, and so I'll be at City Hall. And that's the last meeting I've been to. But they've asked me to come back to go over the requirement letter, and I would certainly go back before they start reviewing grants based on the request of the three existing members.
And I just have one other thing. I would ask that during that time, you would specifically make sure that all of them understand the commitment as far as time is concerned and the number of questions that they may also need to answer in a timely way in order to provide the support necessary for the organizations who are being considered.
I will emphasize that.
I appreciate that.
Mayor, I have a question.
Mr. Gagos.
Does my motion need to be amended to include the two-year term or not? Because I didn't include that in the motion.
I think the recommendation was for fiscal years 16 and 17.
Yeah, I think that covers it.
So, that covers it, okay.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Best.
You know, I know that these are positions that have been appointed by the city manager, but I wonder, because of their significance, if they wouldn't be better off appointed by city council. And as was described earlier, I'm a little hesitant making decisions that will prevent the next city council from making decisions at this moment in time. I kind of would like to defer that to the next council.
My only comment is if we deferred everything, we might as well just adjourn now.
Well, I'm just talking about this one particular item. I'm not talking about everything.
We brought it back at the request of the council from two years ago.
Another discussion? Not proceeded. The vote is in favor of the motion. Please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 14, discussion action to hotel motel tax grant committee. Mr. Garvin is not here.
I would just reiterate what I said, Mayor. Based on the comment and the question from Ms. Israel, they've asked me to come to an orientation meeting. We have put all the documentation together for the past grants this past year. They are reviewing the grants, the post-event forms and everything involved. They would plan on having a meeting in the next week or so, and they'll be off and running and waiting for any applications that are submitted.
Yes.
Chairman, Ms. Pacifica.
Thank you. I have a question. When are those applications going to be available?
When are they available? They're available right now?
When's the deadline?
May 31st.
May 31st.
The application period runs from, I believe, March 1st through May 31st. It's in the requirement letter each year.
Yes, sir. But where do you get those applications?
They can call City Hall, or they can call Mr. Peterson at the library. I mean, at the civic center, either one. They've always called City Hall when they want them.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor?
Ms. Israel.
I had a communication today that said that those applications are not available yet. Now, are we for sure that they are in fact available and they've been available since March 1st?
Yes, ma'am.
We are sure of that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
To this point, we've received no calls, to my knowledge, asking for them, that I know of.
Okay.
But they're freely available to anybody.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I'd like to know if somebody at City Hall told somebody they're not available, so we can correct that.
Sure. All right. Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Item number 16, discussion action to purchase four handheld, oh, wait, I skipped one. How about 15 first? 15 is a discussion action to purchase new police vehicles. Chief Sanchez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Our police fleet is aging rapidly. We feel, while most agencies drive their vehicles for 60,000 miles, we drive ours till the wheels come off. And we've got three that have in excess of 100,000 miles. They're still Crown Victorias. We've been seeing a trend that at about the 80,000 mile mark, we're just pouring money into these vehicles in major repairs. We've come across an opportunity to purchase some 2014 Chevrolet Tahos. They're brand new. They've been sitting on the lot. They have the warranty. They've got the warranty. They're blue, the same color that we use. And we think this is a pretty rare opportunity to purchase them. We'd save a significant amount if we buy 2014s instead of 15s or 16s. I think it would be fiscally responsible. It would show that we're fiscally responsible. We don't need to give, it's a brand new vehicle. It's just got two years on it. I noticed on the recommendation, there was a typo. It says, which I will bring to your attention later, at that, at a price of $223,695.05, we would be able to buy six Chevrolet Tahos. That would be fully equipped, ready to hit the streets.
Could you say the price again, the total price?
For all six, it's $223,695.05. That includes five patrol vehicles and one for me to drive because my vehicle has 128,000 miles right now, and it's in the shop, and we're looking at about $2,000 to repair.
Don't do that.
My Chevy Trailblazer.
Mayor, I might add, he wouldn't buy that vehicle. I told him he was going to buy that vehicle, but after 130,000 miles, it's time for him to have a vehicle.
And, you know, I think this is a great opportunity for us. It's a rare opportunity to purchase. I know it's a big bite to take, but I don't know if we would ever have an opportunity like this again to purchase them at, to where we could save $53,000, which essentially is the price of two of them, the base price.
Mayor?
Fully equipped, that's $37,281.06.
More or less.
Mayor?
Ms. Israel.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I'd like to make a motion to direct the city staff to purchase six 2014 Chevrolet Tahos from Reliable Chevrolet and all the equipment necessary to make them ready for patrol service and other parentheses, chief's vehicle, for a total price of $223,695.05.
Second.
And submit a budget amendment, if necessary, before the end of the fiscal year 2015 to account for the purchase.
Second.
Moved and seconded to direct the city staff to purchase six 2014 Chevrolet Tahos from Reliable Chevrolet and all the equipment necessary to make them ready for patrol and other, in parentheses, chief's vehicle, per total price of $223,695.05, and submit a budget amendment, if necessary, before the end of the fiscal year 2015 to account for the purchase. Any discussion?
Chief, this vehicle will mostly like have the same guarantee on just like...
Five-year, 100,000 miles. We look at the smaller Ford Explorer, but they have a 60,000-mile warranty. And I think if we're going to drive them till they're not usable anymore, I think the 100,000-mile warranty would be a huge advantage for us. So, they're, they come with the extent of the warranty.
I feel like we're getting a good deal. I mean, they're new cars, so...
Yes, sir. They've been sitting on the lot.
We ought to pop the whip at it.
No, proceeded. The vote is in favor of the motion. Please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Item number 16 is discussion action to purchase four handheld Cardinal Badge ticket riders and asset forfeiture, with asset forfeiture funds.
Again, the asset forfeiture fund, there's a section in the law that says it could be spent at the discretion of the chief. However, we feel y'all should be part of the decision-making process. This is money that we seized from drug dealers. It's not taxpayers' money. We love taking drug dealer money, especially when we use it to buy equipment that's going to be used against them.
You don't have another $223,695.05, though?
We'd buy 12 Tahos if we did. But we can buy four ticket riders with warranty. We can buy all four for $5,200. They've offered us a special rate through Cardinal where we purchase the recent software. This will cut our traffic officers. It'll cut their citation writing and their time that it takes to write a citation. It'll cut it in half.
Okay.
Mayor?
It'll make them more efficient.
Ms. Israel.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to purchase four handheld Cardinal Badge ticket riders with asset forfeiture funds in the amount of $5,200.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to purchase four handheld Cardinal Badge ticket riders with asset forfeiture funds in the amount of $2,500, or $5,200. Any discussion? None. Proceed. The vote is in favor of the motion. Please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Mayor, thank you, council.
Item number 17, discussion action for the designation of demolition of a structure at 504 Water Street, property ID 29079.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, once again. I'm here to bring up with some dilapidated houses that we are currently seeking to, the notice that we're seeking to do the property demo, if not compliance. The first one is at 504 North Waters, property ID 29079, owned by Isabelle T. Lopez and JT.
And I think, since we have everything, council, do you have any questions as per what was in the packet for this item? If not, instead of having Mr. Rainey go through everything that was in our packet?
They're all typical, and as you can see through the pictures. You just want to kind of skim through them real quick. Like, is that, that address right there?
That's Water Street.
Go to the next one.
Well, let's not go past Water Street because they're broken out of separate items.
Excuse me. We're on Water Street right now, so we recommend that the city council designate property listed above as dilapidated, hazardous, and after proper notification and time, the owner does not bring the structure and property up to current building code standards, ordinance, or demolish and clear the lot. The city council will authorize the city personnel to demolish the structure and clear the lot and place a lien on the property to recover the amount of cost for the city to demolish the structure and clear the lot. And we will get the proper notice with the paper and direct it as required through us by ordinance before we proceed.
Okay.
Mayor?
Ms. Israel.
Yes. I make a recommendation to designate...
Wait, not recommendation.
Can I get you to not use recommendation? Oh, recommendation. Yeah, you could. How about a motion?
There you go. I like that way.
I'm sorry about that. Yeah. I make a motion to designate the property listed, hmm, none of the rest of that. It just says above. I'm going to go ahead and insert the property, our structure at 504 Water Street, property ID 29079, as dilapidated and hazardous and after proper notification and time, the owner does not bring the structure and property up to current building code standards, ordinances, or demolished and cleared the lot, the city council will authorize city personnel to demolish the structure and clear the lot and place a lien on the property to recover the amount of cost for the city to demolish the structure or structures and clear the lot.
It's been moved and seconded to designate the property at 504 Water Street, property ID 29079, as dilapidated and hazardous, and after proper notification and time, the owner does not bring the structure, structures, and property up to current building code standards, ordinances, or demolished and cleared the lot. The city council will authorize city personnel to demolish the structure and clear the lot and place a lien on the property to recover the amount of cost for the city to demolish the structure, structures, and clear the lot. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Best.
I do want to say that I appreciate you making each one of these properties a separate line item and giving them their due diligence. I appreciate that.
As you requested. And I understand now. It makes it a lot easier.
Other discussion? None. Proceed. The vote is in favor... None will proceed to the voters in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was for it. I was busy.
Motion carries. Item number 18 is discussion action to designate demolish, demolition of the structure at 555 College Street, property ID 28485. Again, everything's in the packet. Do we have any questions for Mr. Rainey? And I guess you'll put the pictures up as we-
This one right here, this one has several more pictures. This one, we might have to consider as an emergency. The reason being, there is a lot of stagnant water. It is with the mosquitoes. It's breeding mosquitoes. There's several tires, drainage ditch, what have you. I mean, it's just overwhelming. I don't know if you've been by there taking a look, but it's overwhelming. I need to go and see what we can do. And this one, I might have to give a shorter notice and consider it as an emergency to get out there and address this ASAP.
Okay.
Mayor?
Mr. Gagos.
I move to direct city staff to declare the designation of the demolishment, demolishing of a structure at 555 College Street, property ID 28485. Designated the property listed above as dilapidated and hazardous, and after proper notification and time, that the owner does not bring the structures, structure, structures, and the property up to current building code standards, ordinances, or demolish and clear the lot, the city council will authorize the city personnel to demolish the structures and clear the lot and place a lien on the property to recover the amount of cost for the city to demolish the structure and clear the lot and declare it an emergency.
Second.
Man, you're making that difficult on me. All right. It's been moved and seconded to designate for demolition a structure at 555 College Street, property ID 28485, dilapidated and hazardous, and after proper notification and time, the owner does not bring the structure, structures, and property up to current building code standards, ordinances, or demolished and cleared the lot. The city council will authorize city personnel to demolish the structure, structures, and clear the lot and place a lien on the property, recover the amount of cost for the city to demolish the structure, structures, and clear the lot and declare it an emergency. Any discussion?
You did good.
If there's none will proceed to the voters in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Item number 19 is discussion action for the designation of demolition of a structure at 123 North Street, property ID 28526. Again, everything's in the packet.
I do want to mention that I've got to mention, all these houses, these houses are all vacant and are all, it's over 50% to get them into compliance. So with that being said, 123 North, this is the third structure of the property. It is actually one large parcel. The main structure that they're still living on, but this house that we can see, it's well over 50% and not dated from time to date. To get up to current standard, we just specify that this is the, on the property, that this is the last structure, the removal structure, not to give the owner or not to give orders.
With the wrong house that we're dilapidating, I mean, tearing down all three because they still are occupying the main structure.
Okay.
With that being said.
Mayor?
It goes.
I move to direct city staff to designate of the demolishment of the structure at 123 North Street, property ID number 28526, property listed above as dilapidated and hazardous, and after proper notification and time, that the owner does not bring the structure or structures and property up to current building code standards, ordinances, or demolish and clear the lot, the city council will authorize city personnel to demolish the structure, structures, and clear the lot and place a lien on the property to recover the amount of cost for the city to demolish the structure and clear the lot, and that property be the last property to the north.
That's already in there.
Secondary, yeah.
Yeah, that's already in there.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to, for the designation of demolition of a structure at 123 North Street, property ID 28526. As dilapidated and hazardous, and after proper notification and time, the owner does not bring the structure, structures, and property up to current building code standards, ordinances, or demolish and clear the lot. City council will authorize city personnel demolish the structure, structures, and clear the lot and place a lien on the property to recover the amount of cost to the city to demolish the structure, structures, and clear the lot. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Best.
We keep going through the same language. Is this part of a condemnation policy, or do we have that kind of written somewhere? So you could just refer to that policy instead of having to repeat it each time?
All right, because since we did line item for each one, it's actually a separate agenda item.
If you actually just read the agenda item, that's sufficient.
Okay.
Any other discussion? None proceed to the voters in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Item number 19 is discussion action for designation of demolition of a structure at 26 Sunrise, property ID 26965. Again, it's all in there.
Mayor?
Ms. Sisral.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for the designation of demolition of a structure at 26 Sunrise Drive, property ID 26965.
It's 126.
26.
26965.
It's been moved and seconded to, for the designation of demolition of a structure at 26 Sunrise Drive, property ID 26965. Any discussion? None will proceed to the voters in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Item number 21 is discussion action for the demolition, designation of demolition of a structure at 507 Fifth Street, property ID 28396.
Mayor?
Ms. Sisral.
I'd like to make a motion for the designation of the demolition of a structure at 507 Fifth Street, property ID 28396.
Second.
Seconded for the designation of demolition of a structure at 507 Fifth Street, property ID 28396. Any discussion? None will proceed to the voters in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign, motion carries.
Been voting. Have you gotten me counting for voting? Have, I've been voting because I just, okay.
That's a bad question to ask.
That's what 23 years will do to you.
We'll have to review the tape later.
Well, I don't remember.
Item number 22 is discussion action for the designation of demolition of a structure at 423 Austin Street, property ID 29609.
Mayor?
Ms. Sisral.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for the designation of demolition of a structure at 423 Austin Street, property ID 29609.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the designation of demolition of a structure at 423 Austin Street, property ID 29609. Any discussion?
Can I have a question?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a statement. These people that own, or supposedly, this lady that claims she owns that property, she's been paying taxes for 30 years, 35 years, but by law or documentation, she does not have any proof of owning it. I said, well, okay, let me find out something else. I said, by finding out something, I told her that I was going to get into it some more because I went to the store yesterday, Dollar Store, and there was a gentleman spraying some insecticide or something, or weed killer or something. But now I haven't heard from her, and she hasn't approached me to ask me any more questions, so, I mean, here it is on the agenda, so, that's what I told her. If you don't comply with the policy, she said, well, I got a letter, certified letter that, you know, cut the grass or weed. I saw somebody doing that, but the house, I told her, if you don't comply with whatever you've been doing or asked to do, the house is going to be demolished.
Understood.
Yes, sir. So I just thought I'd bring that up.
Other discussion? None will proceed to the voters in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Flores, Ms. Rainey.
Council, I want to thank you. Also, I want to point out Jesse, he goes out there every day, gets that job, gets beat up, and it's a hard job. He stays with it. I just want to thank him, part of my staff, and recognize him for how he does it.
27, the regular session of May 7, 2015 is hereby recessed to hold an executive session pursuant of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, so that Chapter D is if changed to attorney. 551.071 executive session matters may be discussed in open session if appropriate.
Mayor?
Time is 7:59 PM.
Mayor, for the record, I would recuse, I would like to recuse myself from executive session, agenda item eight.
So noted. The regular session of May 17, 2015 is now reconvened at 7, excuse me, 9:18 PM. Item number 26, discussion of possible action regarding a possible resolution to clause number 14-09-0794-CBA style for the City of Pleasanton versus Ernest Trevino, 218th District Court, Aladas Coast County, Texas.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Garza.
I move that we direct the city manager and the city attorney to meet with Mr. Trevino's attorney and proceed in what we discussed in executive session.
Second.
Seconded, direct the city manager and the city attorney to, repeat that address?
Meet with Mr. Trevino's attorney.
Will we just change that to communicate, please?
To communicate?
Okay.
You maintain your second?
Yes.
To communicate with Mr. Trevino's attorney as discussed in executive session, any discussion? There's none will proceed to the voters in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign, motion carries.
Mayor, I abstain.
So noted. Item number 27, review of the bills. Mr. Gagos.
No, sir.
Ms. Pacifica.
No, sir.
Mr. Garza.
No, sir.
Mr. Best.
No, sir.
Mr. Sines.
No, sir.
Ms. Sisral.
No.
Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Seconded. We adjourned in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign, meeting is adjourned at 9:19 PM.